Got it.
I have the wrong agenda.
Yeah, I got it, Randy.
Okay.
I have the official plan here. Do we have to look at it? Kimberly?
The official plan is here. I'm gonna be looking at that.
Yeah, I don't know.
So I forgot that, uh, uh, I, I, I couldn't get to that right today.
No, it's okay.
It's maybe something you and I need to sit down and go over.
Okay. Let's see. We have a quorum.
Is Alex on as well?
Oh, where's Alex? Let me see. Oh, do we have the code? He missed it. Um, yes, we do.
Jason.
Yes, there's one for both meetings. Maybe.
Let's see who's here, Ron Bloom. Mark Petosca. AJ. Eric.
I'm sorry, Howard. I'm having problems like sorting through all of the emails, finding the correct agenda for today's meeting.
Yeah, it should be, um, number one. Email one on Friday. Or if you want to, you could go onto the website. Under Planning Commission, it's uploaded there also. One, two, three, four, five.
Here we go. Okay.
Six. We have six people.
Sorry about that. Okay, uh, we will call the Plant Commission to meeting to order at six, at six oh six P M. A public notice of the Planning Commission meeting to be held remotely on Wednesday, August sixth, twenty six, August twenty sixth, twenty twenty, from six P M to seven thirty P M. Um, as permitted by Executive Order twenty twenty dash zero seven, which was signed by Illinois Governor J B Pritzker. Monday, March sixteenth, twenty twenty, in response to COVID nineteen pandemic. Uh, members of the public are able to participate in this meeting remotely by downloading the Zoom app or also watching the meeting live on YouTube. On the City of Blue Island's YouTube website. With that being said, uh, first order of business is roll call to confirm that the Plant Commission has a quorum. All the Chairman, uh, Petosca is here. AJ, if you can unmute yourself, please.
AJ, where is he?
Thank you.
Eric Polkaster here.
Ron Bloom is present.
Jason Berry.
Thank you. Uh, we do have a quorum. Next, uh, order of business is public comment. Members of the public, uh, that were wishing to provide a comment, were to do so by email only. Um, they must have submitted their public comment to Howard Capari at CityBlueIsland.org by August twenty sixth at five to five P M. Email public comments receivable will be read by during the public comment portion of the hearing by Howard Capari, the Community Development Manager. Howard, did you have public comment for this evening?
Yes, yes, I do. Um, earlier this afternoon, I spoke to a person named Bobby. From the physical therapy and sports injury rehabilitation, uh, facility that's located at one thirty one fourteen Southwestern Avenue. Uh, he spoke to me about, uh, parking concern for lot eight, the property right behind the legacy building that's part of, uh, Alex Leifman's portfolio of properties. His concern is, uh, he has people doing physical therapy until six thirty or seven in the evening. I think Monday, Wednesdays and Thursdays. So his only concern is that they park and don't overlap or interfere with his. Uh, patients. Uh, he might participate in this meeting, but he most likely will participate in the zoning board of appeals for the parking variance. That's the only one that I have. Chairman, I also have two, uh, two pieces of documents I would like to read to the public, uh, that I received recently, so everyone is aware. Uh, the first one is the First Evangelical Church. I'll read it very quickly. To whom it may concern, the First Evangelical Lutheran Church is willing to enter into an agreement for Affilia's banquet to make use of the church parking lot immediately adjacent to the east of our building at two five one nine Grove Street. This document does not serve as a legally binding agreement. A legally binding agreement will be agreed upon at a later date pending both parties' attorneys' approval. Before any such agreement is legally executed. Uh, please contact me with any additional question. Pastor Brittany Burl Coy. So that's the first communication. This was one of the last documents that was submitted to my attention by Affilia. So it was not in your original packet. So this is just a confirmation that they're fine with the parking. And then the second one, uh, Affilia sent me an email. At five thirty nine before today's meeting. This is why I'm a little late. Uh, she just, uh, makes some comments here. Uh, I'll read it verbatim. Uh, also on page eleven of the staff report, first paragraph, there needs to be a correction. It states Affilia's banquet will need between eighty to eighty-five parking spaces on a daily basis. I won't need this many parking spaces during the week. Please adjust accordingly. Uh, thanks. Uh, also. She, uh, communicates in another paragraph. For the Z B A meeting, which not, does not pertain to you, but I'll just read it as part of the evidence. Uh, it appears that you or someone retyped the findings of, well, okay. Uh, your staff report variation, there seems to be a difference of numbers, uh, calculation. Uh, it states that Affilia will provide these spaces as substitute, a bit misleading, will be explored if needed in association with other sources. Including public lots, street parking and valet parking spaces. Uh, this should be noted as a correction and ma- made before the Z B A recorded vote. So. Uh, that's for the Z B A. I just read it into the record for the Planning Commission since you guys still look at planning. Parking to a very less extent, but you're still looking at the overall site for the special use. And that's it. I have nothing else to communicate to the commission.
Thank you. And next is, uh, there, there's no old business, so new business is the only topic before us this evening, which is the Planning Commission will review a development application, which will require a text amendment. A special use and a parking variance for a new banquet hall facility in the city of Blue Island. This new business will be located at one three one zero two Southwestern Avenue in Blue Island. In the Uptown Transit Arena Development District, the U T O D. And it will be called Affilia's Banquets. This development application will be reviewed on a special evening where the text amendment, special use and parking variance will be heard and discussed simultaneously. Excuse me, simultaneously. The applicant will remedy the parking deficiency by offering valet parking on three of the city's parking lots and public streets. Affilia Smith Evans, the applicant. Along with Linda Vernon Goldberg, the applicant's attorney, and Alex Leifman, the property owner. Uh, Howard, can you just provide, um, an overview or a summary of um, how this, um, issue came before the Plant Commission this evening and uh, what the Plant Commission will be deciding on this evening as well, please?
So just to give a very quick overview, overview, uh, this development application has been in discussion for almost two years. Uh, September will be two years. Uh, it comes down to, uh, the actual use, the banquet hall use is not listed as a, as a use either permitted or special use in the, uh, zoning ordinance or in the U T O D ordinance. So a text amendment would be needed. So that would be under your purview, the Planning Commission to review the text amendment. And then the second part, if the text amendment gets approved, then the Planning Commission will be looking at the special use for a banquet hall at the subject property, which was read into the record in conjunction with parking. Since this is a special use of, there is also a parking variance that will be further reviewed by the zoning board of appeals. Uh, your commission will look at the special use and look at parking, but not at the, uh, micro level, but at the macro level. You know, in conjunction with this use, the, these are the amount of parking spaces they're asking for valet parking. They're looking to park either in lot A, B, or C, or according to the staff report written by me. Uh, Affilia has provided option one and two, uh, other sites to park vehicles. So for this commission, you're looking at necessarily only two items out of three. The first one is the text amendment. The second one is the special use. If anyone has any concerns to, um, traffic or parking, it can be discussed. And if there's any suggestions that should be forwarded to the zoning board, please forward it. Uh, the zoning board will be, uh, taking in your, uh, your account on this subject. The, uh, the applicant's attorney will do a, a, a good presentation at this point. Mark.
Thank you. Uh, Ms. Goldberg.
Hey, uh, thank you. Um, and, um, thank you so much, Howard, for, um, what is, uh, it's been a pleasure working with you, um, to, uh, understand the project. I, I do a lot of zoning in Chicago. I was not as familiar with, with Blue Island and it really helped me in, uh, drafting language to understand, um, what is the custom usage in Blue Island as well as uh, some of the historic issues and, and, um, the issues that you, that you want for, for future growth. Uh, again, my name is Linda Vernon Goldberg. I'm with, uh, Chicago Law firm with Del and Demansky. And, um, we have a zoning and real estate practice. I'm representing, um, Affilia Smith Evans, who is the president of Affilia's Banquet Entertainment and Conference Center Incorporated and Illinois Corporation, um, which will be the, um, left seat of the, uh, site, uh, and, um, Affilia will be the proprietor. Uh, the building is owned by Blue Holding Inc. and Illinois Corporation. President is Alex Lothman, who I think is, who might be on the call now.
Yes.
Okay, great. Okay, all right. Um, and, um, I, I, I think it's also important to note that unlike some situations in which you have an, an owner and, and tenant, um, cooperating, um, tangentially on a project, these two have been like joined at the hip in terms of, of their, um, excitement and, uh, communication on this project, which has certainly made it, um, helpful for me to understand and for Howard to, uh, prepare the comprehensive, uh, report to the city did. Um, as the chairman indicated, this is a request for, uh, a text amendment, special use and parking variation for an entity which will be known as Affilia's Banquet, located at one three one zero two Southwestern Avenue of Blue Island. It's at the locate, at the intersection of Western Avenue and, um, Vermont Street. Um, the, the notification requirements for the application have been satisfied and legal notice published in two zoning signs were posted on the property as also reflected in the staff report. Um, by way of history, if I think you all probably know, this was formerly the Klein's Department Store. Um, was, which vacated that facility in the nineteen nineties. And it has been, um, in the last few years, um, a vacant property, but then also currently owned by, um, Alex Lothman, who is his company, Blue Holding Inc. Um, as the staff report indicated, and, and prior to my involvement, um, both Alex and Affilia spoke with employees of City Hall and, um, proceeded to get a building permit, thought they could go ahead and, um, with, um, Howard's counsel, and I would, would agree with him that your zoning code does not really, um, specifically reference the banquet hall. And while one could say that you could bootstrap it because you have, um, uh, restaurants in the area that, that use banquet uses. Um, it, it seemed like an appropriate time to, um, specifically give banquet halls the, um, excuse me, its own definition. And that's for two purposes. First of all, it's obviously for this purpose, but as Blue Island grows, um, just dealing now with the concept of having a banquet hall, so that you have future banquet halls, you don't have to then meet again. Um, and so that the, the idea is to have a text amendment that allows for the concept of banquet hall. And then, um, I'll, I'll get into in a few minutes, but one way to do it is to, to, to do a text amendment as a permitted use, which would allow this to go forward, but it would cause some issues with any future of banquet halls, because you don't want to have a banquet hall on every corner, obviously, without going back to use for approval. So, um, I think with Howard's suggestion, we've, uh, crafted some language, which I think allows, um, for the intent of this banquet hall to go forward, but then also to holistically look at your zoning ordinance and your future needs to, to, to address, uh, future halls. So, um, the, the specific text amendment that required, um, it's first of all, a definition of banquet hall, and I typically, um, think you, you use a, you know, a definition that is common and customary, um, so starting with the, with the, the dictionary definition. Um, and then adding in a couple specifics for this. I propose to, uh, define banquet hall as, sorry. A banquet hall is a building or portion thereof, the principal use of which is for events, which are hosted for a wide variety of uses and purposes. Including but not limited to luncheon, reception, private parties, celebrations and commemorations. Um, this would, uh, require amendments to, um, articles. Uh, section thirty-two of your zoning code to include the definition. And then because as it was recommended that we make this a special use rather than permitted use, those corresponding, um, entrances or, or, um, references would need to be made in articles four. Section four point four of both your district, uh, commercial one and commercial two special uses. And the reason for that is because under your code, uh, a banquet hall could be in either of those. And so again, if someone else came to you, um, they would know that those are the only districts that under your current code would, uh, typically even be requested or considered for special use, i.e. not in a, in a residential zone or an industrial zone where they, they don't, uh, uh, typically belong. Uh, it would also require a text amendment to the Blue Island, um, uh, to the U T O D ordinance. And that would be changing the table of regulations to, um, clarify to the banquet halls as special use. In, uh, two sects in, I'm sorry, in, in section four point oh six. Point five, point one. Um. If, if, I'll pause for a second for, uh, any questions you have, but, but then would like to just, um, for the record. Um, go through the justification for the proposed, proposed amendments, because under your, um, your, uh, code. There are, uh, specific justifications that have to be, um, determined, uh, before text amendment to be approved. So any questions so far? Okay. Um, Howard, in his staff report, um, I, I think, uh, verbatim, um, uh, put in the uh, specifications that I proposed. And, and I think if it's, if it's okay with you to see this, I'll just kind of summarize it rather than just reading all of them, because several of them are, are, are similar. Um, that the first is that the existing use of the property. I'm sorry, the first is to, uh, consider the, the, whether the existing use of the property is, is within the, uh, public interest. And again, the building is already there. It's a vacant use. And the benefit is to bring this back to productive use, um, which not only benefits the residents, but improves the tax base. Um, uh, justification for the classification, again, this is commercial, industrial and residential don't fit, fit. So in, under your code, uh, putting it in C one commercial and C two, as well as in the U T O D district. This makes logical sense and in, um, conformity with your zoning code. Um, that the property is, uh, permitted under the existing zoning classification. Again, it's, it's, it's permitted under the U T O D, but because you didn't have a definition under your Blue Island zoning code, we're adding it now to C one and C two district. Um, it's consistent with trends of developments in the area. Um, again, it's the first banquet hall, so, you know, the trend would be that banquet halls are cool and banquet halls are, are things that people like. So that is something that is, um, used, uh, for progressive and growing districts, and will be the first in this district. Um, that the use will be, um, indicated that within a comprehensive plan of the city, which is to uh, continue to provide for the comfort, convenience and general welfare of the people of the district. And again, but being the first banquet hall, and as you'll see as we go through this, with some very, um, thought out um, details from both Alex and, um, Affilia, that is, is truly within your city's comprehensive plan. Um, uh, Howard, in his report, um, again, uh, 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 suggested that these were um, adequate, uh, justifications, as well as the text language was, was acceptable. So if there are no questions, I would like to, um, either have you, uh, you either propose a text amendment or if you want to wait till the end, I can then go through the special use applications now, which is kind of related to this. And then perhaps hopefully approve all of them at the end. That makes sense?
Yeah, that, that's fine.
Okay. All right. So, uh, proceeding, uh, as I said, the reason for special uses is because, um, allowing uh, requirements to come before you does two things. It allows the general public to participate in this process. Again, with the first banquet hall in the city, the public should, should have some input and again, they were given, um, uh, notification. And as you know, we have one comment, uh, already. Uh, and then also allows your plant, plant commission, your zoning board of appeals and your city council to consider the holistic needs of the, of the, sorry, of the city. And, and make sure that the proposed use and, um, density, bulk requirements and parking needs, uh, fit within, um, the, the, the emphasis of the, uh, city. So, um, the, the special uses in this case are, are to look at what is being done here. And, and, uh, again, this is a, a building that takes up the entire, um, block of the, uh, the building takes up the entire lot, and, and that's why, um, the, in, in the parking, um, it would be asking for, uh, offsuit parking considerations. But in terms of its, its actual features, um, you have the plans and, and, um, Howard did a great job of, of summarizing it. But just to summarize something, it's a brand new facility, first in the city, uh, will be on the first floor of the building. Um, a small portion, uh, will be used on the second floor, uh, for adjunct, uh, services, such as, uh, for, uh, Affilia to be able to show, uh, brides, you know, potential options for dresses and to show potential catering options for, for food. Um, and, uh, for her, for offices. But in terms of parking needs of density, it, it, it is able to go with the adjunct and not additional, um, usage or, um, intensity above what will be used on the first floor. Um, and again, again, the, um, uh, the floor plan is, is shown. Uh, you also have some drawings for the, um, exterior, which is minimal. There'll be a blade sign and an awning, and, um, it's understood that, that while those have been conceptually approved by, um, and received the certificate of appropriateness from your, um, landmark commission, because this is a historic building. Then it still needs to get specific, um, building permit approval and that, so after zoning approval. Um, those specific drawings will be again looked at by Howard in his, in his capacity as, as, um, um, uh, uh, look at the, the building code. So, um, that, we, we, we recognize that that is, is a step post zoning. Uh, there'll be three halls, um, uh, in the, in the, in the building, so that there can be one large gathering or there can be, um, gatherings that are in, uh, different rooms. There's a bar area, private kitchen, catering kitchen, bar counter. And, um, these can be reconfigured depending on the, the, uh, specific facility. And, and, and the, the number will change, obviously, depending on the event. Um, the nice thing about this in terms of density is that, um, banquet halls are booked in, in advance. So with respect to parking needs, it's not like people are going to be coming and, you know, Affilia will have no idea what the parking needs are. She'll know in advance, which is kind of think ahead of time, you know, do I need to, um, reach out to the church for this event, for the parking? And he just usually, he's saying parking. And I, and I think, um, as you'll see as we go forward, he's done a very nice job of, of, of thinking that through. Um. The, um, as I said, there's, it's a historic building, um, there, there will be, um, the interior renovation and, um, Alex is, um, um, handling, handling that. Um, there is already a lease between Alex and Affilia, like a ten year lease with two five year option. So again, you know, this has been thought out in terms of not only a, a clear plan for, for occupancy, but a very long-term relationship, which is quite lovely. Um, while the parking, um, study that was commissioned by the, the city, um, suggested, uh, a number of parking spaces after consultation with Alex and, and, and Howard. Um, part of this application is to, um, e- accept that, um, the entire building will, will generate approximately ninety-one parking spaces. And I think generate, meaning that, um, that's the, the use, the projected use maximum that, uh, Affilia is prepared to use both the, uh, three lots that are listed in the parking study as potential lots as well as the messa lots. And, um, as Howard mentioned, uh, at the beginning of this meeting, the, um, a letter of intent that was signed by the church, which, um, gives well over two hundred potential spaces for users that will, uh, in, in anyone's estimation, both the, the parking study commission, the engineers and, um, uh, Affilia's estimate, um, Alex's estimate for if, if, if the remaining space, which is small as least, um, could, could possibly be utilized by this building. Um, Affilia has also, um, um, submitted, um, or, I'm sorry, it's, it's, it's drawn up a valet parking plan, which will include having, um, and that also requires a permit, and so she'll, she'll go through that permit, permit process again after this. Uh, that will, uh, include, um, having valet parkers who are licensed, insured, uh, wearing uniforms, name tags. Um, security cameras, um, you know, she's, uh, will, a- as often as the case, you, you, uh, employ off duty uh, policemen and other security, um, background checks done. So I think she's really carefully thought through what is good, not only for her business, but for the safety of, of the city. Um. So I think it looks like I've kind of morphed into parking. So let, let me just, um, uh, segue back to the special use standards that are required under your ordinances, uh, as justifications for, uh, proposed use. Um, and those include that the establishment of the special use will not be detrimental to or endanger the public health, safety and moral comfort of general welfare. And again, because it's vacant properties, this will actually bring property to productive use. Um, it will, it will, it will not be, uh, injurious or damage the property values in the neighborhood. And again, if, if there's improvement in the values, because you're bringing property to productive use. And it also, it also improves, uh, uh, only property values, but property tax, um, base, which is, I think, um, again, something that, that the city is interested for, um, which is, I think, again, something that the city is interested for the community as well. The establishment of the special use will not impede the orderly and normal development in the surrounding area. And again, there's no new building going up. It's a building that's there, so that's not changing. Adequate utilities, access roads, drainage and necessary facilities have been provided for. Again, existing buildings, access roads are not changing. And there's just no change at all. Adequate measures have been taken for the ingress and egress to minimize traffic congestion in public streets. Again, first of all, it's an existing building, so there will not be any additional congestion except with respect to temporary congestion as people are parking. And again, both with advanced planning by Ophelia to know what night people are coming in as well as for valley parking, that is taken care of. And I will also say, just, you know, as a practical matter, you know, Ophelia is clearly very savvy in terms of her business document and knowing that you not only deal with your customers, but you deal with the neighborhood. So if there are other area events in the happening, you know, it's just, you know, working in the area and just making sure that everybody is okay because, you know, the bowling alley clients or bowling alley participants could be some of her clients and vice versa. So, you know, I anticipate that that's something that on an ongoing basis will be looked at. And again, it helps to enforce the fact that she's thought through what's needed for the health, safety and wellness of the city. The last requirement is that the special use shall in all other respects conform to the applicable regulations of the district as may be modified by the city council or pursuant to recommendations of the zoning board of appeals. Again, after this meeting, we'll be saying, making some similar comments to the board of appeals with more emphasis at that point on parking, because that's in their purview to dig into that a little bit more deeply. But again, we can do that here if you would like. Any questions so far? All right. Okay, so third is the parking variation. And as indicated, and as you know, the development committee commissioned a parking study by Sam Ford Consulting with input from Ophelia, Alex, Howard, Mr. Alvarez, a contract with city civil engineer and others how to deal with this unique and new service in business in the city. And what's really quite nice about this is that, I just applaud the city for taking the step of looking proactively in terms of your city planning. You know, I, you know, there's a lot, and give all due respect to Chicago, which I like a lot. It's kind of always hit and miss without kind of forward thinking. And the fact that you looked at an area wide parking plan and are looking at piece of growth of the area, I think is great and it just, it helped us to be able to think, okay, what makes sense for Ophelia's plan? It's also helping her to think through what is the area plan and projections for growth. So again, with that, the applicant in conjunction with Howard's assessment of the parking needs for the area, just a conservative approach to that, we are suggesting 98 parking spaces. Again, that is the Saturday peak number during the week. And I guess the drastic comments I know Ophelia made at the beginning of this meeting, indeed, during the week, non-peak usage would estimated to be no more than 48 parking spaces. It's the weekend where it would be more protection, 81 parking spaces again for hers. But again, taking into consideration the building as a whole, 98 parking, it seems to be a higher count that is typical for this area. And therefore, the variance request is to be comprehensive for looking at this building as a whole. Right, Howard? Okay, all right. So the idea is a holistic approach to the area. Okay, so one reason that a variance is required, a couple. First of all, you're not a whole new unit, so under state law, any kind of a special use, you have a right as an entity to look at parking generally. And so, but and specific to the UTOD ordinance, it says that adaptive reuses of building, including remodeling as we're doing, and expansions up to 20% are exempt from parking requirements. But in this case, the renovations will be for more than 20% of the building. And so it's not exempt from parking requirements. And you can't have onsite parking anyway because the building takes up the whole lot. So both by inference and logically, this needs to be looked at as a parking matter. And I think Howard was smart to think of this not only in terms of this deal, but generally. So again, under the UTOD, there are justifications that need to be determined in the finding of facts by the zoning board of appeals. But again, you as, you deliver to society should also look at these and feel comfortable if these justifications have been satisfied. And the first justification is that the property cannot yield a reasonable return if it's permitted to be used only its current condition. And again, because the building occupies the entire lot, it needs to have onsite parking. The second is the proposed variations will not merely serve as a convenience to the applicant, but will eliminate some demonstrable and unusual hardships, which will result if the strict letter of the regulation was carried out. And again, strict letter of the regulation will require onsite parking, which cannot happen in this instance. The alleged hardship has not been created by any person having a current proprietary interest in the premises. Again, existing buildings, Alex brought it after the fact, isn't changing it. So he did not, he neither created or contributed or has a proprietary interest in the hardship that was created. The proposed variation will not materially or not be materially detrimental to the public welfare or injurious to other properties and improvements in the neighborhood. And again, this is to bring vacant property back to productive use and therefore will not be detrimental to the public interest. And sorry, I haven't looked at anybody during this. I'm just looking at the paper and usually look up and down, so that's okay. And Howard, if you could just give me your question. Okay, the last one is the proposed variation will not impair the adequate supply of light, air to the adjacent properties, substantial increased congestion in the public streets, increase the danger of fire or endanger the public safety. And again, this is a vacant property. Not only will light not be affected, but lighting will be better at night because Ophelia will have security lighting in place. And that will actually help the public interest. And again, congestion in the public streets are not a factor because there's no new exterior improvements and because there is a parking plan in place. I think, oh no, a couple more, sorry about that. The proposed variation will not alter the essential characteristics of the neighborhood, in existing buildings. The proposed variation is in harmony with the street and is intended as a chapter. And again, I think the whole reason that we're here is to bring a new use to you, to make it in conformity with the existing code and with users that are projected in the future. So that really ends my presentation, except to just point out that in the conclusion of Howard's report, he says he is very supportive of the text amendment, special use and parking variations. And with that, I'm finished and open to, oh, I'm sorry. And Ophelia and Alex are both here for questions as well as anything that Howard may want to add.
Thank you very much, Ms. Goldberg. Members of the commission, do you want to open this up for questions from the commissioners to the applicant and her party? Or would you like to first begin to discuss the first issue, which would be whether or not we recommend a text amendment to the zoning code to allow for banquet facilities within the C one, C two and UTOD districts? I think we should discuss that matter first and then we can move on to the special use. Any thoughts? Do the commissioners suggest that we?
I couldn't get off, I couldn't get off, I'm muted. I, you know, I'm fine with that approach. First of all, Linda, thank you for walking us through the application and the basis for proposing these changes. Howard, as always, thank you for your very comprehensive report. Very, very helpful. My only question relative to the special use and the definition that is being proposed. I think you started out saying that we just start out with a general description and then we add to it or it was added to. I was just curious in areas where they do have banquet halls and similar ordinances, were any of those looked at as well in terms of terminology for that special use?
I didn't, yes, I did look at some Chicago, I think similar to this. But I did not, in looking at, I just looked generally and said, I think this is worse. I didn't want to have something that was too broad to have you guys say, wait a minute. So I decided to keep it narrow within the context of what Ophelia said she wants to do and going forward. And so, so what I tried to do by way of example was to say luncheons reception, to say that, you know, there will be some receptions are usually in the evening, but not necessarily, and just to make it clear that this could be daytime for this evening use. I guess I couldn't put breakfast and luncheons, but realistically, it's usually luncheons and on. But the including two language kind of made it broad. So we can massage, if you'd like, you know, with Howard just kind of massage that language or look at some other things if you'd like. But I think that this, for the purposes of this application, I think this is appropriate, not too narrow, not too broad.
Thank you, Linda. And you know what, I was remiss. Let me just back up and say, first of all, welcome to Ophelia, to Alex, to Linda. Thank you for being here tonight. And, you know, this is an exciting opportunity without a doubt, no question. A lot of work has gone into getting all of this prepared and analyzed and reviewed and rereviewed. And Howard, again, to you and your staff, I'm sure played a big part in that. So thank you for that. And I think you mentioned, use the term in your report, trailblazer. And that's exactly true. And I think so some of my comments and questions will be specific to the proposed use of this, but also trying to think forward broadly as well. Particularly as we see growth in the uptown area, you know, now, even though it's been two years in the making, you know, now we've got some more things to look at as well, right? You reference in your report, Club Crave, the vault. You know, so we've seen the kind of demand that that has generated, some of the things with parking. And again, that's something that, you know, needs to, you know, to be vetted out, I think, a little bit more from that perspective. But relative to the definition itself, again, and I don't have a disagreement with it. It's more of a question and always when there's a caveat of not limited to, you know, that could kind of open the door for a lot of unintended things that maybe we're not thinking of. And I know you want to try to capture as much as you can. But in Ophelia's, throughout the report here, the focus is on banquets and banquet hall, right? But from a business perspective, there's also references to entertainment and conference center. You know, both exciting additions to what, you know, may a banquet hall be. But I think those are the, those are the kind of things that, you know, piqued my interest because when we think about conference facilities, training facilities, you know, blending in the transportation opportunities that Blue Island has historically provided. I mean, that actually opens up some additional venues that may spur other businesses in town, you know. I mean, kind of looking more broadly, you know, hotels, for example. But I think that, you know, maybe as part of this discussion, and there's a reference in here to private parties, you know. I'm not quite sure what that means, but certainly, you know, we've all been to private parties of one type or another. And so I think just from the, you know, looking at the general welfare and well being and those kind of things, I think we need to, you know, be sensitive to what that definition could entail. And then I was, you know, also hoping, and maybe this isn't the appropriate time, Mr. Chairman, but it would be good to hear from Ophelia relative to kind of her thoughts in some of these areas and get to know a little bit better relative to her vision for, you know, kind of where we see the development coming, you know, from that perspective. But specific to the definition of the special use in the banquet hall, those are, those are some of my thoughts.
I think those are very appropriate and I agree. If with the permission of the committee, I'd like to suggest that we amend this to add entertainment and conference centers. You would feel more comfortable taking private parties out. I think entertainment is a broader concept anyway. But I guess my suggestion would be to add, simply to add to this. And again, consistent with her branding, and sorry, I probably should have thought about this from giving her name, so thank you again for that comment. But with your permission, then adding to this definition, entertainment is conference center. So I could, after this, make the application same to Howard, if Howard that.
Yeah, if I may just add on to that, and then I know Ophelia's got your hand up. Maybe a little discussion when we talk about entertainment, what really does that mean? Are those like having music venues or theater groups come in or, you know, that kind of thing?
Is this time for me to answer the question? Okay, first, I just want to say thank you for allowing me to be on with you guys. I really appreciate it, you know, the evening, the opportunity to talk with you. Ophelia's banquet's entertainment and conference center. When I say entertainment, of course, I'm not talking about concerts or anything like that. I'm talking about entertainment, say for instance, it will be maybe like a fashion show. It would be maybe something like, you know, it wouldn't, it would be something like, people coming in, maybe doing some type of theatrical dancing or something like that. It could be something biblically related. It could be anything like that, but it's not anything that's going to be wild or anything like that. It's like I said, no concerts, no rappers or any things like that. We want to keep it exclusive, we want to keep it kind of sophisticated. So we're not looking to, you know, be all out there. It's, we were looking for adult crowds. I'm not looking to have anything where it's going to be young people unless it's part. I'm not looking to have anything where it's going to be young people unless it's parties. When I say private parties, I mean, say, for instance, you may have a party with your group and you just want that group, which is probably everybody on this line, excluding myself. But you may want that group and you guys come, it's private. So you have a room to be able to have that private conference or that private meeting. We'll have executive board table, boardroom tables and chairs. And then we'll have a lounge area where you can sit and have private meetings. Because you may not need that entire room. You just need somewhere quaint to be able to do that. So that's what that would be. The entertainment, again, like I say, we will, on the weekdays, we may have things like salsa classes, you know, merengue classes or stepping classes or things like that, something to keep the banquet hall going throughout the entire week. Of course, you know, we will have weddings, we will have receptions, we would do bypasses if necessary, you know, when people are coming in to do things like that. So, but like I said, I like to keep the place very classy and sophisticated, nothing wild or outlandish or anything like that. So pretty much that's what it would be. You know, it's like I said, it's no concerts, no rappers or anything like that. So, and it's not big enough to do, you know, you know, big concerts or anything like that either. So the banquet rooms, they will be sectioned off appropriately. The upstairs area, just like Attorney Goldberg was saying, it will be primarily for like, you take the elevator upstairs and then it's everything related to banquets. I'll have probably a couple offices up there, private office for myself to get away from everybody down there. But everything related, we were trying to, I'm hoping these individuals are still available. Where we're looking for a bridal shop, a tuxedo shop. Also, everything, everything dealing with banquets and decorations. We got a flower shop that's interested in coming up. And so I'll probably just have even a little novelty place where they can buy earrings or things like that. And so some of the businesses, of course, they will have to get their business license. We will bring extra revenue into the city. But pretty much that, the building will not be anything where there are wild parties. Any party over 100, that's when I will solicit the Blue Island Police Department, often do the officers to come, one per 100. Anything over that, of course, you know, and, you know, I would like them to be armed, you know, because police officers are armed, you know, anything over 100, because you just never know, something is, you know, maybe a situation where they have to show it to get things in order. And that's for any venue or any, anywhere there's a lot of people. But like I said, it will be catered food. Initially, we're starting off with just catered. I'm trying to give this place, let me just say this. I know most of you know of Denoffles. Denoffles is a beautiful facility, it's absolutely stunning, but the minimum plate is $65 per person. The average person cannot afford that if you've got 150, 200 people coming to your venues. And so I'm trying to make this place beautiful, elegant, but yet affordable. And so that's where, you know, affordable, but not not over the top. I'm trying to give, even with the valet parking, the valet parking will be, you know, like I'm asking, as Howard was saying in his report, I'm asking the, you know, I think our report said we can get up to 25. I'm asking for at least 30 behind the building. I know that there is ample parking. Thank goodness for the parking study, but I'm asking for that. I know there are three additional parking lots. These lots, they're fine and dandy, but I'm trying to find something a little closer. They would probably be, you know, my ace in the hole if I need to. But I've already, you know, talked and making agreements with the church and the school because it's just like a block down. And so a block down is closer to me to be at a valet there and back, you know? And then the alleyway is big enough for me to, against the building, to kind of like have the porters come and leave and, you know, park cars, you know, and then get them over there to the valet position. So I think, I think pretty much, I know that there's absolutely more than enough parking for it. I'm thinking for the Ophelia's Banquet, in essence, I probably won't need more than 75, 80 parking spots on, if there's a full night on a weekend. During the weekday, of course, you know, if we have things like, even at night during the weekday, if we have salsa classes or stepping classes, I still won't need that many parking spots. You know, I don't even think it would be the 30 parking spots in the back for that. But just to keep the momentum going in the building. And just trying to, like I said, like Linda was saying, I'm just, I'm not coming to Blue Island just to come as a business. I'm coming to Blue Island to be a part of Blue Island and to make a difference. And I believe, because this means so much more to me than just coming in and opening a business. I've had plenty of businesses, you know, we've owned plenty of businesses. I'm coming in to make an impact and that's what I like to do.
Very well said. A lot of great energy, a lot of great ideas. And if I may, and then, Mr. Chairman, I'll turn it back over to you. Some of my questions, again, we used to have somebody in our planning commission that would always, you know, tell the applicants that, you know, our goal is that you are wildly successful in whatever you do. And I always liked that. I thought that was really, really good.
It is nice.
And certainly the events planning piece of that, that can go in a lot of different directions. On the parking thing, again, I don't want to get too off track, but more and more people are using Uber and Lyft and those kind of services as well. So that kind of offsets some of that, of course. And that's, and that's very helpful. And then just, I want to make sure I understand that, and maybe this is off track, but the catering, is the, is the, in my understanding, you're going to be cooking onsite or you're going to be catering in for these events?
Catering in initially, I will have the hood there for, down the line in the future. But right now, I wanted to start it off with just catering food in. Of course, all the caterers will be licensed.
I misunderstood that in the application, so thank you for that. I think that's all I've got, Mr. Chairman, on this piece.
Thank you, Commissioner. I just want to make sure that we stay on track because it's already 7 o'clock and ZB is supposed to be meeting at 7:30. On this, do any of the other commissioners have questions, comments, concerns regarding the definition of banquet hall as a permitted special use within these districts? Any commissioners?
No.
Okay.
May I add, based on Mr. Bloom's comment and Ophelia's explanation, then what I would like to propose then is adding seminars and classes, artistic performances, entertainment and conference conferences.
Howard, has the city attorneys or the legislative council reviewed this definition of banquet hall? I know that you have and you are, you know, have been in the planning field. You know, is this something that we should, you know, have reviewed by the city attorney? Or, because Ms. Goldberg represents the applicant. And I would like for a definition to be drafted by the city attorney or the legislative council who represents the city of Blue Island rather than the applicant.
So what happens here is planning and zoning will do their review tonight. This application will go to community development, so you're going to have seven out of 14 altermender. And then there is when our attorney will start reviewing the materials for the text amendment, the definition, what have you. That would be the opportune time for us, me, staff, to communicate with the attorney to see if there is a difference, let's say, the city's definition versus the applicant. And that would probably be fine tuned at that manner. Let's say the definition is completely different, then we might have to revisit this here at the planning and zoning, but I doubt it.
So do we have any historical understanding? Because there is no definition of banquet hall within the U T O D, which was separately drafted and, you know, adopted zoning regulations for the U T O D district. That was completed after the comprehensive plan was adopted, if I'm not mistaken. Can anybody correct me on that?
I think that's correct.
So I'm just trying to understand, you know, the historical reason why we have not included banquet facility as a permitted special use within the existing districts?
Mark, I would guess it's just oversight. You know, I don't think there was any intent to exclude them other than wasn't on the radar.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, that's just a historical, I'm just trying to understand.
I don't remember any discussions that said we don't want this. And at the time, as sort of Howard pointed out in his report, people were having banquets as sort of accessory to their principal uses.
Yeah, and that's, I mean, I know that we had, you know, the banquet facility temporarily at the, which is now Cook County Health Building. We also had banquet facilities at the Elks Building, which is next to the library, which was classified under a fraternal organization, which was a number, which we had a number of issues with. You know, and with the current secondary uses of the existing businesses that are having private parties is causing an issue with parking and peace in ensuring that the general health, welfare, safety, and morals of the community are not disturbed. We have had those issues with those other businesses that have been in town in the past. And I'm concerned that this is going to be a very similar issue that we have had in the past. I understand that Blue Island is in a unique situation because of the age of its community and the shopping district. It does not have sufficient onsite parking for a number of these businesses. And we do have to take that into account. And I'm glad that we had the parking study done. And, you know, it raises some issues, but that parking study, I believe, did not fully incorporate, the entire study area did not incorporate the immediate area outside of Vermont and Western. I don't believe it incorporated the vault, which was not fully up and operational during the time the parking study was conducted, which has had a tremendous impact on parking issues in the uptown area. So I'm concerned that, one, the parking study is already dated. And, two, we have had these issues with fraternal organizations or illegally operated, I don't know what you call these businesses, that were operating as a banquet hall facility. And we had a number of issues with them in the past. I don't know if this is something, you know, I don't know if we have examined enough, you know, when we first, as a planning commissioner a year ago, we started saying like, we need to revisit our zoning code and we need to look at the special uses and the permitted uses as a whole, as the city as a whole. And I don't know if we, you know, I don't feel comfortable. And I understand that the city attorneys will be reviewing, you know, the definition of a banquet hall and making sure that it conforms to what's agreeable to the city attorneys. But I'm just one commissioner, so I would, that's why I'm asking for some of the other commissioners' input on this. And whether they, you know, whether they have any input on.
May I ask you a quick question, Mark, with regard to that? Were the other ones banquet halls or were they party rooms? The ones that you've had the issues with? Because that makes a big difference.
They were, I believe one of them had the term banquet hall or banquet facility in the name of it. There was similar issues that you're facing as a special use. I believe that the building that Cook County Health houses now was going through the same process. However, they were jumping, they were occupying the space before they had the correct business licensing and occupancy permit and stuff like that. And parking was an issue in that immediate area. Parking was an issue in, even though there's parking behind all of the entire building of the block on between York Street and High Street on Western Avenue, behind the Brandon Valley Building. There's tremendous parking there, but there was still an issue with parking in the, I mean, that's one of the issues that we face is the commercial bucks right up against the residential. And, you know, I don't want, I want to focus on the topic and the definition of banquet hall, banquet hall, banquet facility, rental facility, whatever we want to talk about it. We'll talk about specifics when we talk about the special use for Ophelia's F13102.
If I may interject also, that's why I'm proposing to alleviate the problem from the other parking lots and use the church and the, the church and the school. That way, you know, it kind of frees up those lots for other entities who are coming in.
And also, yeah, and we'll talk specifically about your special use after we're done talking about, in general, definition of a banquet facility.
One comment, which I think is understood, but Mr. Chairman, just adjust your concern. One of the beauties of suggesting that banquet halls be defined as a separate use is that any future applicant would need to come back to you. And at that point, you can vet specifically the business plan as well as the parking usage. So you have that control on a case-specific basis.
Yeah, I'm aware, I'm aware that conditions can be placed on the special use.
And then secondly, to the extent that I, having been a former city attorney for the city of Chicago, I do understand that the need or interest of having your own counsel look at it. And I'd be happy to work with him or her and with Howard to make adjustments that are necessary for the broader purposes conformity and what you want for the city.
Thank you.
Just very quickly, if I might, just, I do want to commend Ophelia and your team relative to looking at the parking options because that, you know, that is always, I would imagine it's a very common concern wherever you have these types of venues. And I think from my read of the plan, you know, to your, to your point, Mark, it was dated and we've got now more historical with some of the other businesses in town. But I don't want to lose sight of the fact that other options were looked at as part of this as well. And I think that could be workable.
I agree, but I don't want to talk about the special use for Ophelia's Banquet. You know, I think we, yeah, we just needed to stay focused on that. So if any commissioners, you know, have any comments, thoughts, concerns about that topic of the definition of banquet facility and whether or not we allow it as a permitted special use in those districts? Then if there is no discussion, would one of the commissioners like to make a recommendation or a motion or?
Mark, I got a question. Well, you're concerned that we're not only adding that to U T O D, but to C1, C2 as well?
That is part of my concern, yeah. Yeah, I mean, is it suitable, is it suitable for one of those three districts? I mean, we also have other districts and, you know, I mean, not saying that it, you know, belongs in an industrial district or anything like that. But, you know, our zoning code needs work. Cause it doesn't reflect reality right now. Um, and I don't, yeah, whether or not it belongs, whether or not that belongs in, you know, all three, and that, and that's the question. Do we want to make a text amendment for a permitted special use in just the U T O D? Or do we want it in a C one only, or do we want it to C two? I mean, I, I want to have feedback from commissioners on what they think.
I, when I saw it, I, I wa- I did kind of wonder why we're looking at C one and T, C two, just because it is, you know, this uses in U T O D, and it seems like, you know, we could just focus on staying in downtown. I, I'm in support of the, you know, of the definition or special use in downtown districts. Um, where I work, we just did one in June, so, um, I think that makes sense in downtowns. And I would be happy Howard jump in, or we have the applicant's attorney with plenty of experience here too. Um, you know, if, if you could, I don't know if that's a condition or you just make a motion to recommend a special use for the U T O D. And, um, you know, look at C one and C two as part of a more comprehensive review of the, uh, village's use table.
Respectfully, and Howard jumped in here, I think initially, uh, my answer was just U T O Ds, but I think Howard, wanted to be able to look more comprehensively and thought that this was, um, something that was good for the city. But to your point, if, um, I, I do agree that, well, I'm not your counsel, that there is some general moderniz- modernization that might be appropriate for your, uh, for your ordinance. Perhaps it is appropriate to just request tonight, uh, a definition and use in this district and for you to then, um, later consider. And I think Howard, part of the issue was wanting to, to use this as one step to modernize a larger issue. But I also hear the commissioner that perhaps this does not be the venue or time to do that.
So, so I, I, I look at the U T O D as a, as a mixed use, right? If a person wants to apply for a banquet hall on their own Western Avenue and they purchased the property and might not be as big as this one, but might be smaller, then it pretty much forfeits anyone else and in all the other zones, it would just be in the U T O D. So you're narrowing the possibility of banquet halls in other places. I, I'm fine if, if, if the commission wants to just do it in the U T O D, I'm fine. We'll put some parameters on it.
That's not to say that it wouldn't be considered in C one and C two, but I think what Mark's trying to say is we'd like to have that discussion relative to like a
A comp- a comprehensive.
Yeah, all the other uses we're considering in those districts.
Yeah.
And, and, and since, you know, you have a, a property owner and a business owner, you know, making an application for a specific project and a specific site. You know, i- it's easier to consider, is this appropriate for U T O D, since we're talking about a building in, in, in uptown. I get where you're coming from too. I mean, i- i- it's also easier to make some bigger changes, so, but.
There's going to be, uh, bigger changes, but the way the municipality is moving forward, we don't have any funding to do a rewrite of the zoning code. It would be me, it would be staff doing it section by section. It's going to take time. So I don't want to forfeit an applicant, you know, well, wait for two or three years and Howard will get back to you on this. So, so that's the, uh, that's the, the real issue here. It's just, uh, staff.
Howard, could we, uh, could we limit the number of, uh, special uses within each district? Uh, like, could we limit like only one banquet facility within the U T O D district?
Well, that was kind of my question because that really was kind of my, one of my questions, where I wasn't sure to address it here. Like, you know, if I have a banquet hall, I mean, would you allow another standing banquet hall to be two blocks away from me? I'm, I'm like, is there, are there any stipulations or boundaries with regard to that? Because, you know, we wouldn't want competition, I personally wouldn't want competition that close. I understand that Ravens has their little banquet hall, but it's inside their club, you know, and the others. But I'm just really concerned that you, if, if you would allow another banquet hall, specifically banquet hall, to come in just a few blocks away. I don't think that that would be kind of right for me.
See, the, the situation here is you don't see it, you know, we don't limit, you know, you only allow 12 restaurants in Blue Island. We don't allow, you know, only 10 bars. So starting putting a number on it, I don't think it's the right approach.
No, yeah, I would just, yeah, I'm just.
Because then you start to forfeit or discriminate against other people that want to propose a similar use. So hence the reason why I looked at the U T O D and expanded towards the C one, C two. If a person wants to do a banquet hall on the other side of the city. Uh, but I'm, like, like I mentioned before, the only time we actually put specific numbers on a use was the cannabis, uh, dispensary, because that was a very particular use. That is not the norm. That's the anomaly where we put numbers.
Yeah, that's right. That's where I was going. That's where I was asking.
Yeah, and I, I agree too, again, that not being your counsel, but I, I, putting a number, I think it invites, um, you know, potential discrimination to against that one person that comes in after you've added, added two, as well as, um, just questioning the legislative attempts for, for doing that. So I would, but again, too, you, you've got the ability to, at any instance to look at, at, uh, the cooperative and part of that would be to look at gentitive. Um, the applicant would also have to determine that, um, its use is not detrimental to the area. If, if somebody's coming in with five different applications, it is detrimental to the area. It's going to hurt, um, the other, it's, it's going to hurt the, the, the area as, as well as, um, take away from revenues because each is going to have a smaller piece of the pie.
Mark, before we got, jump into any motions, I just had a couple of questions on from the, I heard that the signage was reviewed by the Historic Preservation Commission. Were the elevations looked at or will they be?
I, are, are you speaking with me? Because yes, what I did was I received all of the, um, you know, um, documentation, documentation from the city, from Howard himself with regard to, you know, signage and what size and things like that. And so I submitted it over to a few of the, uh, blade companies to make sure that it's in, uh, compliance to what you've got, especially for the U T O D area.
I was thinking more specifically about the changes to the elevations. There's, you know, it didn't calls out stucco. I wasn't sure what, uh, original terracotta elements were being preserved or not. Just wanted to make sure as a historic building that and, and this isn't the plan commission's purview, this is the H P C's purview, but that, that if they haven't seen, if they've seen it, tell me yes. If they haven't, no.
They've seen it.
They've seen it. Yeah, there's a blade, the, the I company has a blade up, uh, theirs is just a blown, but they have one right next door.
Yeah, no, I'm not, not even the signage, just the actual elements of the, the remodel. That's, sounds like yes. Sounds very good.
They, they went towards last year, I want to say November, December, Ophelia probably knows better, or Alex. When Brian Paulus, the building official, was, you know, uh, the liaison to that group, uh, pretty much everything was approved and the concept idea, everything was fine. And then that gave us permission to continue with the planning and zoning where we are today.
Very good. Also curious, is there still residential in, in the building?
Yes. No one's there now, but there are four apartments up there that are in, they're vacant.
Okay. Are those going to be rehabbed or not, maybe not part of your project, but I know the, the building owners here, is there, are those residential units going to be continued?
Yes, good evening. So we, we are gonna actually redo the whole building. And that's why we're interested in putting all the components, so that way the building will function as one.
Okay. Thank you. And then, um, just out of curiosity, any concerns, um, with the liquor commission or liquor license? I'm assuming there will be one. Um, is there going to be gaming, um, again?
No gaming, no gaming, but liquor license, I'm, I'm an alcoholic. No, I'm just kidding. No, no, I don't think I, I, I think I'll pass the liquor for the license. I think so.
Yeah, oh, yeah, no, that, uh, Howard, it, or, um, I don't know if Randy's just, uh, here watching. Any, any feedback or concern from city hall or city council about, uh, liquor? Or not?
Well, initially, when I, when we first started talking about this a few years ago, um, there was no concern.
Okay.
See, the, the situation is this, I, well, when, when I came to this position, there was already discussion, there were fur- further discussion of basically for affiliate to submit the business license application. So when I came into this department, into this job, it was pretty much sitting on my desk, waiting for me to review it and, and, uh, sign off on it. This is where I started bringing the concept of the banquet hall, a special use, parking and all of that. So yes, there were lots of discussions. And like I mentioned in my staff report, most of those people are no longer employed. What was promised, I wasn't there. I wasn't part of that, uh, to give a, to give an answer. Probably liquor was discussed because no one's going to say, yeah, it's a great idea to do a banquet hall. And oh, by the way, we're not going to give you a liquor license.
Still here, so he was the one who kind of, you know, kind of spearheaded that with the liquor license.
Okay, no, good. Uh, until exactly what Howard said, if this is all moot point, if, if you don't get a liquor license.
Yes.
So help me out in, on, on the motion here, Howard, or, or, or in Mark. And I know the Planning and Zoning Commission recommends to recommend, to recommend, you know, so this go in five minutes to the zoning board of appeals, uh, who has a little bit more teeth in the matter than the plan commission does. And then ultimately, uh, uh, to our elected officials. Is this one motion to recommend the, the three elements? I'd have to pull up my, my. What were the two elements or two?
Well, the text amendment and the, uh, the special use. But we can't talk special use without parking, so hence the reason why we're spending time talking about parking here. You, your, your commission is looking at planning in a holistic manner, you know, the greater good of the city, you know, one business, you know, one entity. The zoning board is going to spend more time looking at the micro elements of it, the numbers, the parking lots and what have you. But looking at it, we only have five minutes left before this session, uh, terminates. The thing is this, I don't think we're anywhere near for, you know, some type of a vote for the text amendment. We haven't even discussed the special use here at the planning commission, so I'm, I'm not sure how the chairman wants to proceed.
Uh, how would you, I mean, since you're saying Z B A needs to be in five minutes, how should we proceed?
Well, the advantage of scheduling this special meeting, uh, I did it for several reasons. The first reason was to give it a dedicated time, so we're not being rushed. But since, you know, the definition is a valid concern, you know, U T O D versus the C one, C two, I recommend for us to table this to the next regularly scheduled planning commission meeting, which is September third. It's not that far away. It's not like a month ahead, a month away. This will give us some time to, for me to speak with the attorney, to look at the definition and, uh, to start proposing ideas of the U T O D. Uh, we do not have anything scheduled for the next planning or zoning, so there's no application. So it would be a meeting where we would just approve minutes from the prior meeting. So I feel comfortable in, in, in allowing for us to continue if the commission feels fine with it.
I feel comfortable with that. What was that date?
Uh, September third, Thursday, the first Thursday of every month we meet. So, so, so again, in, in that situation, we might have to do like an hour and a half again. We start at six, then the other group does it at seven thirty. So we have more time if we're going to spend forty minutes just to talk about the special use. I'm not sure how this commission feels about that, if you want to go with the regularly scheduled time or not. The only thing under state statute, we have to advertise it tonight. So I don't have to run an advertisement in the newspaper, but I'll put it in the agenda forty-eight hours before the next meeting.
That's, that works with me. Yeah, I'm supportive of that. I think we made some, we had some really good quality discussion tonight that I think hopefully helped me. I don't know, hopefully it helped everybody else. And it is just next week, so.
I'd also want to hear, you know, from the applicant or attorney, the property owner, their availability or their even opinions of, of that.
Right, of course, naturally.
Well, I think Howard, what you said at first was that when, you know, you will be talking with the, uh, when you, we get ready to go into the final meetings, that you'll be talking to the attorney at that point, and an attorney will be reviewing everything. So I'm not, I don't, I don't, I don't understand why we can't move forward like now with a recommendation or a motion, uh, because we've, we've laid so much on the table in an hour and a half. And so you pretty much can see kind of where everything is, you, you, you got a full understanding of the parking and, um, you know, and and our proposal with regard to the parking, you can see here that we're, you know, you're trying to make it as easy as possible for the city by using other lots um, outside of the ones that are recommended in this, in the sur- in the survey. Um, also with regard to the banquets, the main banquet, I think that, I mean, you know, I understand that you're looking for a description or a definition of it, but like you said, you know, down the line, the attorney will review, be reviewing all of this paperwork and will modify as needed, if needed. So I, I, I don't, that's just me, my opinion, you know, um, I don't, I don't see, I think we've covered so much tonight. I don't understand why a recommendation, you know, or emotion can't be made tonight, but of course it's up to you, gentlemen.
I think, oh, we, sorry, go ahead.
I have to a- agree with that. Um, what you're proposing is to make it less inclusive, so it doesn't affect o- other properties, but it seems like everybody is in agreement on what is needed for affiliate to move forward. And as I said, in terms of the definition, I'm happy to work with, um, your counsel for that when it gets to the city, um, uh, council, um, e- everything that you, everything you're supposed to find. So I, I would just implore you in the interest of time to, um, approve this with the qualification that we will, will agree to work diligently with your staff to accomplish the, the spirit of, of what you've requested.
Yeah.
And to follow.
Yeah.
You know, uh, uh, reviewing the staff report, Howard, um, and, and deferring to staff, you know, being staff somewhere. Your staff report recommends this, this special use and, and text amendment and et cetera, right?
I recommend it, but we, you know, your commission has not even discussed the special use component. We're still on the text amendment and it's already seven thirty. I'm just being realistic here. Does the commission feel comfortable in doing a vote for everything tonight? For planning, for, for the text amendment, with the definition being worked out with our attorney and with the special use. If, if everyone's in, in agreement, then I'm fine, but I, I take it there's going to be more of a discussion with special use. It's not my call, I'm just suggesting here because of the time constraint.
Um, in my opinion, I, yes, I am. I've read the staff report, read the materials that were provided. Read, read the recommendation, but, you know, one of several, so.
Subject to, uh, the just definition discussion, I, I, I'm with Jason on this.
Yeah, I think after reading through everything and the recommendations, I'm, I'm also, um, on the page with Commissioner Bloom and Commissioner Berry.
And part of that is, is the understanding is that, you know, Howard, as you said, the zoning board is going to dive into details that, and not to say not relevant, but aren't part of the purview of, of this commission, you know, unfortunately so perhaps. But, uh, knowing that this will get vetted, you know, several more times.
How does the chairman feel about this?
I mean, I could move forward with the text amendment tonight. I don't know if we should move forward with the special use tonight.
Would you want two separate motions, Mark?
Yeah, it's the call of the, you know, the commissioners.
So are you saying the text amendment with the changes I've, that were discussed?
Yeah, if I were to make a motion, it would be for a, a text amendment for the U T O D and a special use for Ophelia.
Well, I would, yeah, two, two separate, I'm sorry, let's, two separate motions, one on the text amendment and then one on the special use.
Gotcha. No problem. So I will start that. I will make a motion to recommend to the zoning board of appeals, a text amendment to allow banquet in the U T O D zoning district.
Got it.
I'll second that.
Who's that? Uh, A J?
A J.
Okay.
It's a roll call vote?
Yes.
Chairman Petosca, aye. Chairman Bloom?
Aye.
Chairman, where? I'm sorry, Commissioner, where?
Aye.
Commissioner Berry?
Aye.
Commissioner Polcaster?
Aye.
Commissioner Brown?
I think, um, Mr. Brown is having some technical problems.
Yeah, he just texted me, he's having some technical.
So, uh, we still have approval, how? we still have approval, however, I don't know how will you do this?
I record his vote, but.
Yeah.
I guess he abstains.
Right, five one. Well, five zero with an abstention.
All right, and then for the second motion, make a motion to recommend to the Zoning Board of Appeals, a special use for Ophelia Banquets located on Western Avenue in the U T O D district.
Special use. Second.
I'll second.
Roll call, Commissioner, Chairman Petosca, no. Commissioner Bloom?
Aye.
Commissioner Ware?
I'll say no on that one.
Commissioner Berry?
Yes.
Commissioner Polcaster?
Aye.
Commissioner Brown?
So it's two, two?
Well, three, 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 two?
Three, two.
Who voted? Okay, Mark Petosca, A J against it, Ron Bloom for it, Eric Polcaster and Jason Berry, right? I'm writing this down too, is.
Correct.
Okay.
Can David text him? I mean, he's texting you.
I, I'm sure Howard will let the zoning board know about the technical difficulty.
So just to confirm on that, the motion has failed, correct? No, no. Okay, so Commissioner, I just want to confirm how this, how, how the vote occurred. Commissioner Petosca, aye, that's me, said no. Commissioner Bloom said yes?
Yes.
Commissioner Ware said no. Berry said yes, Polcaster said yes.
Yes.
Okay, just, I'm just confirming. And Mr. Brown will abstain?
It's as if he's absent.
I just don't know how to handle that. I mean, I can, you, you guys tell me if he's been having technical issues and hasn't heard some of the presentation. I don't think we can give a valid vote.
The commissioner is present, Mark.
Yeah. So I don't, we handle that, maybe Howard, Scott.
Yeah, I don't know. I don't, I'm. Is that here?
So are, are, are we saying that in any of that, if you're not agreeing to all of them, we have to come back to you on September third? Anybody or, we're not clear on what, what's happening here?
It looks like the majority is saying yes.
Okay, but, but, but not for all three? The park, isn't the parking?
Parking is not before the plant commission.
Oh, oh, okay, got it, got it.
Look like it carries because I, I'm looking at the open meetings stuff. It doesn't say you need to have like a, a, a larger number out of five. We had a quorum for four, for a regular forum. So it's a three, two vote. Jason, in your situation as a planner, similar situation like me, usually dispasses.
Yes.
A three, two vote or a four, three vote.
Confirm his attendance, I, I mean, we see his name on the screen, but.
He'll be noted as an abstention. He, he, he's not here to speak. Let me check my phone. Yeah, I don't have anything from him, so yeah, it's a three, two, it carries. Ron Bloom, Jason Berry, who was the third one, Eric Polcaster?
Eric Polcaster.
Okay. All right, so it, it, it passes, it passes to the zoning board.
Thank you.
All right.
All right.
Really, really appreciate all your efforts and interest in, in Blue Island.
Well, we, we, we have to adjourn, so.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
What time is it?
Seven thirty-nine, Chairman Petosca seconds that motion. All members in favor?
Aye.
Passes, we're adjourned, seven thirty-nine. Thank you very much, good luck, Ms. Evans.
Thank you so much.
Thank you for your deliberation, gentlemen.
Who seconded?
Chairman Petosca.
Who, who, who was the first one?
Berry motion.
Okay, all right. All right, okay. Thank you.